I'd like to call the December 6, 2021 Common Council Meeting to Order. It's approximately 6:04 or 6:02 PM. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Koenig.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also like to acknowledge Councilman Galloway. It looks like a new knee has done you well. I've seen you smile already more times than in the last month, so good to have you back.
That is 40 time down.
Thank you. More times than all this year, right?
There you go. Roll call, Clerk Treasurer Parthoon.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Koenig.
Here.
Councilwoman Frankie. Six present, one absent.
Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 6-0. We will now move to petitions and comments of citizens, and I will begin with our Economic Development Director from LEET, Bert Cook, for a brief comment.
Good evening to the Council. Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. I have a support letter that I am requesting you sign. Most of us are very familiar with the Flaherty &amp; Collins Project that's being built in the center of Newport Landing. As you well know, it's been very successful. They have a huge waiting list, and we're excited to see those first units rent. In advance of that, the developer is considering expanding the project and doubling the size. As part of that, and we're still, the city is still very much in that consideration phase, but in order to do things in the proper order, they are applying for redevelopment credits through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation and are requesting a letter of support from the City Council. So I've presented that to you. I know it's in your packets, but I would appreciate a signature on that and being able to forward that as part of the application.
And again, this is, could you explain where this would be?
So this is in Newport Landing, the Banks Development, which is the apartment complex that's 90% done at this point. The first units are going to lease in February, and then potentially this, if we were to move forward with this project, it would be an additional six acres that would move into the kind of the center of the Newport Landing development, the property that's still available.
So you don't need a motion?
I would defer to legal on that.
Yes.
Because you're having one person sign.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve from the council?
It's all moved.
Second.
So I do have a motion and a second discussion. One thing I'd like to add is, individuals like to pick and choose what they talk about regarding housing. We've said from day one, we need housing of affordable type, high-end type, and everything in between. And people forget the concept of what the council is committed to with using federal funds to take over Jefferson Avenue, which has been ignored for years and allowed slumlords to kind of run the show, Maple Avenue, Harrison Avenue. You know, we're committed, the council's committed to affordable, respectful housing. We have high-end opportunities at Beechwood Lakes. We have these happening here. So we have a variety of opportunities coming here, and I just want to make sure we note that for the public.
And the demand as well, Mayor, right? We very pleased with you. You're going to have 70 units that are available in very short order, and I understand they've got a waiting list double the size of that, which I think speaks very highly of the desire that our residents have to fill those particular units.
And you will see 701 Maple in two weeks or less, the model unit. So I just want to add, the city's working extremely hard for all types of housing. And we do have a question?
Yeah, I have to apologize. I did not see that letter in my packet, so I have not read it. I apologize. Was that in part of our packet?
I thought it was, but...
Did you get it?
I was going to say, I didn't get it, so I was scared to make a motion or do anything until we'd read the letter.
Yeah, I was a little nervous about making a motion or voting on it because I personally did not read it. I didn't see it in my packet.
I'd be happy to read it if that's acceptable.
Well, it's up to the council.
Does it need a vote tonight?
If it were to be included in the application, yes.
Okay. If it needs a vote tonight, then I guess you could...
It's also a mirror image of the support letter that you sent in 2018. I just changed the dates on it, so...
Okay. Sure.
I would recommend reading it then, if they've not seen it.
But I'd also like to have a copy of it for all the council people. If we can make a brief copy.
Well, let's, he can read it first.
Yeah.
So it's addressed to the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. Dear IEDC, the Common Council of the City of LaPorte believes the mixed-use residential project built by Flaherty &amp; Collins is a shining example of what public-private partnership should look like. This project has been successful in that the developer is once again applying for redevelopment tax credits through the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. As the elected representatives for our community, we understand the city needs improvement in the quality of available housing to help retain and attract residents. The new project would be a great opportunity to address these continued needs. Furthermore, the project will beautify an area of our city that was both an eyesore and a reminder of the huge loss, of a huge loss in LaPorte. The Alice Chalmers factory site was a major employer from the early 1900s until it closed in 1983. Until just recently, it has been crowded with huge, underutilized, or vacant industrial buildings. The demolition of these structures, plus the investment into infrastructure and environmental cleanup efforts of the LaPorte Redevelopment Commission have set the stage for renewal of this long-blighted site. We have confidence this project will both stimulate economic growth in Newport Landing and address the lack of high-quality residential options that are needed by employers throughout our community. The benefits of this endeavor will be extremely valuable to LaPorte, and the redevelopment tax credits are an essential component of its feasibility. We appreciate the involvement of the IEDC in supporting redevelopment projects on old industrial sites such as Newport Landing and encourage the authorization of redevelopment tax credits for this important project.
Questions?
So I do have a question with this letter of support, if it's signed. It's not obligating us. It's just further application to secure said funding.
Correct. There's a, this is the very first step in a number of steps in order to consider a project like this. So if they, the credits are not able to be achieved, there is no project. So that would be the first thing. It also has to be, the project would have to be approved by our redevelopment commission. They would have to choose to work with this developer to expand or build this new phase of the project. So we have a number of steps that would have to occur, but again, the first one is to identify if there's even the possibility of accessing the proper funding to make this feasible.
So exploratory at this point?
Correct.
Thank you.
And it's committing the council to nothing.
So we do have a motion and a second, but the council, if you feel comfortable with it? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chudalik, and if you'd state your name, address for the record. Airbnbs.
Yeah. Marty Chudalik, F Street, LaPorte. I'm very displeased with what you all just did. It's like the 18,000-page Human Health Services Act that was passed where you all didn't read it and discuss it and think about the situation before you're doing this. Concerning, the Airbnbs is one thing on my list that y'all haven't, I've spoken with each one of you and asked, not individually, but in these city council meetings, I petition you, this is the petition in common area. I petition you all to address an ordinance that deals with the Airbnbs, and I haven't seen anything come to fruition of it. Do you all look at these things after they happen today? Anyway, I would like to have an ordinance drawn up for Airbnbs, whatever state that is, because there's hundreds of cities across the United States of America who are going through issues with Airbnbs being a difficulty to the people who are citizens of the communities where these Airbnbs might be. And so that's one reason there. This, accepting what this young man is doing, I agree with LaPorte growing in such like this. And I don't really, I'm not against it. I come up here and I don't know what you think of me, but I grew up here. I was raised here. I was born here in Holy Family Hospital. I'm committed to the community as well. But by making these decisions just like that, y'all need to think about the people, the citizens of the community. With this housing that is anticipated on being expanded, it's going to raise the tax rates for the community. And you talked about 701, and they talked about the cost of rent there being $800 a month. Well, that's not affordable housing to a lot of people who live in this community. And as the city continues to increase...
Could you repeat that, Mr. Chudalik?
Pardon?
Could you repeat that?
I heard on the news that 701 was looking, 701 Maple was going to be affordable housing, and they threw out the figure of $800 a month. That's not really affordable housing to a lot of people in this community.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
I'm concerned about the over crossings that you all are building. You're taking away on-grade crossings. Have any of you pushed a wheelchair up over the overpass? A shopping cart? Kids in strollers? Have you done your own wheelchair over the over crossing? You're taking out the on-grade crossings that are allowing these citizens to cross comfortably across the on-grade crossings of the railroad tracks. And by eliminating some of the crossings because we're having over crossings, I would like you all to consider this strongly for the community, for the people of the community. And we are often, I want to congratulate you on the great news of your city of, state of the city thing that went on, and you are doing a good job. I got to admit that. I just think that things move too fast in government overall, not just LaPorte. They keep comparing us to Michigan City, I'm sorry, South Bend and Valparaiso. I would like the City Council to recognize that we do not have universities to support this tax increases that are going to be happening because of the things that are moving along through this city. And then you were talking about doing stuff on Jefferson and Harrison and Maple. The City Council is not a realtor. So I'd like you all to consider these things, because what's going to happen is, people like me are going to be taxed, and my family, if they were able to take over my home when I go to be with the Lord, they're going to be taxed out of this community.
Thank you, Mr. Chudalik. And again, this is not a question and answer. This is a council meeting, but if I could make a few points. Number one, the tax rates. The more the assessment goes up, the reduction in taxes that happen. Right now, the LaPorte County gives $28 million between LaPorte County, the City of LaPorte, the City of Michigan City in property tax cap refunds. We lose 25% of our revenue right off the bat that goes to you as a homeowner and many people in the city of LaPorte, right off the bat. We are the sixth lowest taxing county in the state from a property tax perspective. And again, we are struggling. You want roads done, you want sidewalks, but most importantly, public safety. The one thing we've heard is fire and police need to stay here. You talk about South Bend, they can go tomorrow after we spend your tax dollars in $40,000 worth of training to see them go tomorrow, which we've seen happen, to South Bend where they make $20,000 more tomorrow. So we have committed to being responsible with the tax dollars, but when we lose 25% of it right off the bat, LaPorte County, the City of Michigan City as a whole, lose 28 million that go to homeowners, I'm not sure where we see a tax increase due to property taxes. And as, if I could, I allowed you to speak, and then a university? We consider Purdue Northwest as our university here in West. Mr. Chudalik, you've had your chance, and I appreciate that, but PNW is our university, and we need to make sure our children are being educated so when they come back here, they can be, make a positive impact into our community. And as far as you say of B&amp;B, we probably get over 20 requests for ordinances to pass through, if not weekly, daily. Just because somebody asks doesn't mean it makes sense. And the limp, this council has done a fantastic job at really looking into this, and we're not New Buffalo. We don't have the Airbnbs that they do, and I can assure you, they've done the work at every angle to make sure when the time is right, they are prepared to go. So I just wanted to make sure we appreciate your attendance here and coming, and is there any more comment from the council to add?
I would just point out, we have nine Airbnbs in the city of LaPorte, and as long as I've been in the city, it turned out I've never heard any, like, any wild parties or out-of-control partying going on to any extent that you may see along the lakeshore down in Florida or things like that. So I, again, I'm not the council, but I don't see why you'd regulate something when there's not something that needs to be regulated at this point. So if that changes, if there's wild parties on Pine Lake, then maybe we can revisit that, but it...
There's more parties on Green Acres at the Otis House than there are along the lake. But Mr. Chudalik, and I do appreciate the comments, and it's nice to hear the government is moving fast, because we usually hear the government moves so slow. So we appreciate hearing that. Any other comments from the council? Is there any public comment that somebody did not sign up for that would like to add? Thank you.
There is comment online.
There are comments online?
Jeff Miller was surprised that we continue to develop the toxic dump, and I don't know if you have a comment about how much was removed from...
We did, the city and Nick Minnick not being here, but well before my term, the leadership teams, both Republican and Democrat alike, like, had a plan for Newport Landing and removed 81,000 tons of contamination out of Newport Landing, which Nick Minnick has equaled to 16,000 circus elephants that you will never forget. But the only other option would be to put a fence around it, ignore it as if it wasn't there, and the future of our community would be in danger. And I think this team and back from Mayor Gonzalez, Mayor Crowback, Mayor Morris, Mayor Milo, Mayor Krentz, all of them had the vision to make sure they're going to have a clean and safe community for the future. Now on to a, I guess a happy day, but a sad day. You know, we have a great organization and an unbelievable leader in Karen Bernacki and family advocates who have done the most difficult job making sure families and, most importantly, children have a voice during issues that may happen to them. And it's not something we see every day face-to-face, and I can't imagine with what Karen and her team have seen. And I'll give my wife credit. She called Karen a pioneer, and she really has been, and after 31 years has chosen to retire and move on. And this is kind of the council's way and the city of LaPorte's way to say thank you for all her work and effort to make a difference in children's life. And so Karen, if you don't mind coming forward to the microphone, we have a City of LaPorte proclamation that I'd like to read to you. Whereas in 1989, while attending Purdue North Central, Karen Bernacki was introduced to the National Court Appointed Special Advocate Program, the concept of using trained volunteers to advocate for abused and neglected children. And whereas Karen Bernacki decided to bring that concept to our community, and the LaPorte County CASA, now Family Advocates, was established with Karen as the first prorector. And whereas Karen not only established the LaPorte County CASA, she also worked with the state legislature to strengthen CASA programs across the state of Indiana. And whereas Karen will retire from her life's work after career of service to the children of LaPorte, in the words of Neil Young, "She has been a miner for a heart of gold." Whereas her vision for families, her love for children, her pursuit of fairness in our justice system is evident by the years of service and countless lives she has touched. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Dermody, Mayor of the City of LaPorte, State of Indiana, and further declare Tuesday, December 7, 2021, as Karen Bernacki Day. In LaPorte, and encourage our citizens to honor her amazing accomplishments and her contribution to the families in our community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and the great seal of the City of LaPorte, State of Indiana, the sixth day of December 2021. Thomas P. Dermody, Mayor, City of LaPorte. So before we allow Karen to come up and receive and say a few words, council members, any additional thoughts of thanks?
I would. So I've had the pleasure of knowing Karen both personally and professionally for quite a few years now, and instead of reinventing the wheel, I'll reread what I posted to her timeline on June 30. Congratulations now on your retirement, Karen. Thank you for being such a passionate, dedicated, and determined leader and advocate for our community's children. Thank you for all your sacrifices you made personally for the greater good. You are an amazing professional mother, wife, and now grandmother. Thank you for paving the way and leading by example, demonstrating that a woman can do it all and do it gracefully. Wishing you and Lou an amazing ride in this next chapter of life. Thank you for everything.
That was great, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Karen, before you come over, we'd love to hear your thoughts.
One, I'm just so honored. Who knew, like, 31 years ago when I had this idea, and I just really just wanted to make a difference for kids, and this whole CASA program just kind of got thrown into my lap. So, and it didn't happen by me alone. It happened with our volunteers and the team. And I have to say, getting this from this group of people here in LaPorte, it's really an honor, because I've seen that all of you are so committed to the community and the fact that you're pushing involvement with people. And you see the change in the, in LaPorte, and it's great to see all the women on the City Council and other women in the community going forward and being leaders. But that being said, I think we all know that our job isn't done. I don't plan on being a quiet voice. I'll probably always have a voice with our legislators, and Representative Pressle knows that, as we just saw him on Friday. But it's just truly an honor to have been able to do something I love to do with so many amazing people, that I've learned so many amazing things. So thank you so much for this honor.
Well, we're going to keep adding to it, because State Representative Jim Pressle is here, and would also like to acknowledge Jim, so please move forward and...
Well, I don't have a proclamation, but when I heard that you were retiring and because of our involvement, and all the things that you've really done legislative-wise with myself and Senator Bohacik and way ahead of us being in the General Assembly, I really wanted to acknowledge that from at the state level and from the community members. So I'm just going to read to you. State of Indiana, Indiana House of Representatives, it is my pleasure to congratulate Karen Bernacki for demonstrating dedication and commitment to our community as you celebrate your retirement after 31 years. Thanks for illustrating the importance of a true public servant and for making our community proud. I send you our community's thanks and best wishes in your retirement. Jim Pressle.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We're going to come over. Before we, we'd like everybody to come around. Karen, could you introduce your board, family, everybody?
So we've got Karen, obviously, it's my husband's wife. Somehow feel like Neil Young think out of there somehow. I don't know. I don't know. And my, some of my staff in the back, April, Rita, Russell, and Eber, both have been here for a while. I think everyone knows the magistrate and his wife, Dar. Our board is Rudy Kong, Kim Sowers, and Matt Pressley, and of course, our new CEO, Jenny is here as well, so thank you for being here too.
Would you like Lou up for the...
Sure.
We're going to bring our council members.
We're hitting up the bath.
Come on, get close, everybody like you Roger, like you like Roger. Yeah, it'd be great. I'll get to it on the wall. I'll get in over here. You sure?
Yeah.
Which one do you look at, Frank?
That's what I'm saying. You're all in this.
I got like three or four.
Okay.
Thank you. Here's the best news. Those that were here for that don't feel the need to stay for the remaining portion. You will not be offended if you walk out, so...
Not at all.
You want to take a couple quick minutes? Will I? And also, there were a couple other comments on the public portion. Mr. Andrew Harrell mentioned PNW is in Westville. As we look regionally and talk about region, and our kids go to PNW, thank you for recognizing that. We have to think bigger, and so we appreciate his thoughts as well on Airbnbs. He believes we need to do ordinances, it sounds like, right now, correct?
Yeah.
So, thank you, Mr. Harrell. Next, we have a special brief presentation from Health Link. Next, we have a special brief presentation from Health Link. You know, as we've talked about and we hear a lot from our citizens, what we are doing to help those in need. And we've said since day one, we want to be more than just a shelter. We want to be more than just providing something year after year and not changing lives. We as a city have focused on connecting these individuals. We don't scream it to the mountaintops. We try to be respectful of those individuals that are in need without having to tell everybody. And we focus our efforts on homelessness, but many of the homelessness are really people with mental health, behavioral health issues, or drug addiction issues. Our police and fire are working every day to connect people. And we do have a partner that's been doing that work. And I'd like to ask Ephida Malden from Health Link and Dr. Mickey Webb from Meridian Health Services to come up, who's a partner that works with Health Link. And we're excited to do more to help those in need from our community. So I've asked them to bring a brief presentation. You'll see this here, the LaPorte Community Analysis. And we're excited for your presentation and future work together to help those in need.
Thank you, Mayor Dermody and members of the council, members of our community. I'm part of a group that has identified as, for lack of a better name, the LaPorte Behavioral Health Task Force. It's composed of mental health professionals from a variety of different organizations, including the LaPorte County Drug Free Partnership, Health Link, Meridian Health Services. As Mr. Dermody indicated, I'm Mickey Webb. I'm joined by Ephida Malden from Health Link, Tyra Robinson Walker, who's the Director of Treatment, LaPorte County Jail, and a professor at Indiana University Northwest. But we're here in spirit with Mimi Gardner, the Director of Behavioral Health from Health Link, Ellen Grisula from North Shore, and Dan Peck from Swanson Center. We've been meeting over the last several weeks with a concept of developing a Behavioral Health Task Force to look at what the health, mental health, and behavioral and addiction needs are in LaPorte County. Now, I'm old and I like data because data tells a story. And Dignity Health provides a planning tool for communities based on structural indicators. What it points out is indicators for the ZIP Code four-six-three-five-zero based on national indicators as some of the highest need. I know I'm not telling you things that you don't know. We've talked about homelessness, we've talked about addiction, we talked about mental health. As I look at the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte's website, they provide data which indicates that LaPorte County is eighty-four out of ninety-two county on health outcomes and eighty-nine out of ninety-two counties on social and economic indicators. We can only get better. And our commitment is to celebrate the momentum that has already been started with the infrastructure that has developed, the economic development that is occurring in the city of LaPorte, but to make this an even greater place for all of our community. What you have in your packet is just a brief gap analysis, but a concern to our health professionals or mental health professionals and addiction professionals is the shortage of providers which make it even more challenging for people who need services to receive those services. We're proposing several different components that need to occur, and that includes collaborative coordination, evidence-based training, a sequential intercept model, which means that there's a logical step upon discharge, crisis intervention training for law enforcement, which is a national evidence-based training. Also transition support, treatment while incarcerated, and clinical therapy and case management services through no wrong door. Part of the Drug Free Partnership and Health Link and our combined collaboration includes a crisis intervention team that's working to develop the training and also an overdose fatality review team. Our challenges are corroborated by our county coroner, who indicates the numbers of overdose deaths that have increased since last year, our suicides that have increased dramatically since last year. We're not designed to point fingers at any one organization or at administrative infrastructure of what's not being done. We look at a bigger picture of what that vision is of what can be done. I told Mr. Dermody before the meeting, LaPorte's place where I work, play, pray, and play. And it's where I want to continue to have this place continue to grow as a community. I'm excited to tell you that this is innovative because it disrupts programmatic silos. How many organizations play nice in the sandbox? As mental health professionals, we're trying to. But I'm also excited to share with you that LaPorte will be in the national spotlight in February in Washington DC at CATCA's National Leadership Forum, where members of our task force are presenting some of the collaborative work that we're doing. And we were selected via competitive process to present. There'll be about three thousand people there that include professionals, legislators, people in recovery, people in mental health, people in addiction, people with challenges, parents and youth. While we're in DC, we will also be meeting with federal legislators from Indiana to share what and provide information, because we can't lobby, provide information what some of the unique challenges that we face. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Robinson Walker and Ms. Ephida Malden to go in a little more detail. I know I was reminded to be brief, but what we're doing is asking for your support and consideration of a representative to work with us, not asking for any money. How often do you hear that?
Never.
Not at this point.
Never.
We might be back later. But we wanted you to be aware of the work that we're doing, that we want to continue to support the efforts of the City of LaPorte moving forward, but also looking at mental health and behavioral health and addiction as part of the bigger picture, to address homelessness, to address concerns of veterans, to address those who are incarcerated. We don't want our jails to be a revolving door. We want to provide those services. So Ms. Walker and Ms. Malden.
So good evening, everybody. As my colleague, Dr. Webb, had just said, I'm Tyra Robinson Walker, and I am a licensed clinical social worker, and I'm the Director of Treatment Services in the county jail as well as a clinical professor at Indiana University, where I educate our future social workers, so hopefully eventually we can retire. So that is the goal. Kind of what our vision is in reference to this task team is to look at how we can get there before they actually are incarcerated. That is the trick that many people find, kind of, what do we do? That's where CIT, Crisis Intervention Team, comes into place. In this task force, some of us have already been trained. I was trained five years ago. So what would happen is there is a team of people that come to the site when there is a medical, mental health, or an addiction crisis in play at that particular point. We come to that particular site. Once we're at that site, we assess them to see if at that particular time, do they need more intensive medical, mental health support at that time where we can collaborate, transition them into the hospital, get them stabilized. Once they're stabilized, transition them back to where they need to be, whether that's in the community for outpatient treatment or whether that particular crime that they did ends them up in jail. If it ends them up in jail, some of the things are already in play at the jail. What we do is we screen them for medical, mental health, and addiction interventions at that particular time. They're screened at the door. You guys have probably already heard from your police officers, how long does it take to get a person booked into the county jail? Well, it does take a minute because we develop an actual screening tool that actually assess all of those particular things before they come into the jail in the Sally Court. Once they come into the jail, at that particular point, a referral is made to myself or the medical nurse, depending on the assessment screening tool at that time. At that time in the jail, we provide brief solution-focused intervention, also maybe stabilize them on any mental health medication or medical medication to assure that there is no particular issues that would arise to cause them any distress and they're safe as well as other people inside the facility are safe. From that particular point, we collaborate with pre-trial services, we collaborate if they're a veteran. We assess if they need to maybe be, fit the criteria for Veterans Treatment Court. We do also, I do sit on that particular treatment team as well, so we can assess a clinical aspect in reference to that, in addition to looking at an interface with drug court as well. So in that aspect, if that particular point, they fit those criterias, we make referrals to them. If they're in the jail, we provide the programming, the brief solution-focused intervention, and maybe those interface of treatment. If any of those things do not fit criteria for that particular detainee at that time, we transition them into the community to our resources as we have talked about with Health Link, Meridian, Bowen, and North Shore Frontline. Did I miss one? Swanson Center. So we have that collaborative effort, and we all are on that team to assure that that transition happens appropriately. The pieces that we're missing at this particular point that we've talked about as professionals for years is the collaboration of our legislators, the courts, and probation to assure that once they are transitioned back into community, they have somewhat of a supportive eye watching to assure that they are still in those particular roles of getting that treatment. Because what happens is they reoffend, they fall off their meds, they get lost, they fall in those cracks, and they come all back around to us again. Those are our repeated offenders, and this happens all the time. And that's where we feeling like that we're falling short and we're really wanting to partner with people, not only our police officers, our courts, and our judges in reference to assuring that transition stays stable. You feel like I missed anything on those particular pieces? That's our vision and hopes that it moves forward.
And I just wanted to, my name is Ephida Malden. I am the Clinical Manager and the interim Chief Behavioral Health and Addiction Officer at Health Link. Just to really hit on what Dr. Webb had mentioned, the no wrong door policy, and why that's so important when we're working in a community. Now, we understand that like there is a shortage of behavioral health clinicians, but what happens when an individual has a substance use disorder and they have the right mindset, they want help, and they go to like an individual who is a social service agency, but they do not provide that type of services that they're looking for. The no wrong door policy will actually help that individual, no matter what doorstep they're coming to, get them connected. We're also, we're just talking about making those healthy transitions and connections that are very understandable to like members of the community, so that everyone who wants the help and assistance, they can get it no matter which door they're going through. So that's gonna be a really big need. And just to mention like what was said earlier, the services that are provided within a community such as Swanson, Meridian, Health Link, we have a behavioral health as well. We have like behavioral health consultants that can kind of see an individual who has a primary care doctor, and they can get them connected and referred as well. And that's just some of the services that I just want to mention in the community of LaPorte.
Questions? I would just like to add, the Health Link facility, we've really appreciated your partnership, the dentist office that you have in your building, the physician office that you have for those in need, those poor, those lower income, and being able to go through, and I'm sad about Mimi leaving, Mimi Gardner was wonderful, but we appreciate all that you're doing. And again, what I think most people don't understand, and we're not capable of it, is the people that they're called homeless are really mental health, behavioral health issues that make them homeless or drug addiction that make them homeless. And our police and fire are working extremely hard by connecting and partnering with you to get the professional help that they need. Because again, we want them the next year not to be in the same situation. We want to improve their life, get them connected with job preparation, budgets, and how to live and how to survive. And you've just been a fantastic partner, and we're excited to do more. Other questions?
I don't think it should be lost on us at the night we recognize Karen Bernacki that this group is presenting. So I lived in that world that Karen was in as a lawyer and representing parents whose children were taken away, and I'd say twenty-five percent of them at least was a drug-related issue, right? So this group can hopefully reduce the amount of work that your wife will have to do in the coming years.
Thank you all.
We're hoping that Jackie will be part of our task force.
I'm sure she's nodding yes.
And I thank you for your support and for your time and listening.
Thank you all. Standing Committee reports. Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on November seventeenth. Approval was given for a downtown ice rink that will be in operation from January twenty-first to February twenty-first. The rink will be installed at the corner parking lot on Monroe and State Streets, and preliminary plans call for it to be open from three PM to ten PM weekdays and from ten AM to ten PM on the weekends. With a generous grant from the Healthcare Foundation in two thousand eighteen, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars was dedicated to the Kestling Park Ball Diamonds to come up with a schematic design, cost estimate, and site plan to include ADA requirements. For various reasons, the project has been put off, but is now ready to have a site plan developed. The Park Department will be getting quotes for new playground equipment at Ben Reese Park Playground. There was a discussion of an inclusive playground being added to the Chessey Clear Lake Trail Connector near Ron Reed Field in Fox Park. Beechwood is planning a membership rate increase of seventy-five dollars for a single membership and one hundred dollars for a family membership. There will be no more Friday twenty-five dollar golf days. This special will be changed to Wednesdays. In lieu of rental fees, LaPorte Seamless Charities will donate ten percent of net alcohol sales from their inappropriate trivia event to be held the first Saturday in February. This benefit will be held to get additional playground equipment at Hastings Park. And then Traffic Commission will be meeting tomorrow, six PM, at the police station.
Councilman Vincent.
Nothing to add.
Councilman Galloway.
No report.
I would also like to thank the Veterans Committee, and we've got work to do for even a better event on Veterans Day, but thank you for those efforts.
I heard it was a great event, and you got a lot of children there.
More to come.
That's great.
Councilwoman Cutler.
Business Improvement District Board will meet this month on Monday, December thirteenth at five PM. And there are five council-appointed seats up for consideration on tonight's agenda. The Urban Enterprise Association Board will not meet this month, and there are four council-appointed seats up for consideration on tonight's agenda as well. The Alcohol Beverage Review Commission met for the second time this year to review an application for a three-way alcohol permit. The application was very thorough, and they plan to open in a space vacated by the New Age Bakery in downtown. The board unanimously approved to recommend the application to the city council, and it is on our agenda again tonight.
Councilwoman West.
The Fire Merritt Commission meeting was held on December first, and all three shifts of the performance ratings are almost complete. The board will complete Chief Snyder's and Assistant Chief Burke's within this week. And when they're calculating the promotion scores, the breakdown is as follows. Forty percent is the promotion test, thirty percent is the four-year average of performance ratings, twenty percent is seniority, and ten percent is the result of promotion, of the promotion interview. The next meeting will be held on January fifth at six-thirty at Station Number One.
Councilwoman Kinesny.
The HPC. The HPC was awarded a grant for two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from Indiana Humanities for the printing and distribution of an educational coloring book featuring local historical buildings and sites in the city of LaPorte. The target audience is third and fourth grade students in the LaPorte Community School System. This coloring book will be distributed to elementary students studying local history. It will educate the students about the historical significance of the sites as well as encourage them to preserve landmarks for the future. Local history and school community is normally taught in the spring. The first target is to distribute the coloring books in the spring of twenty twenty-two. The HPC also hopes to sell these coloring books at local businesses for all to enjoy. A very special thanks to Commissioners Bruce Johnson and Peter Steele, who created the content for the coloring book and completed the grant application for this project, as well as a special thanks to Mary Kay Steele for her content creation and editing, as well as Peggy Michaels for creating all of the illustrations that you'll find throughout the book. The next HPC meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December twenty-first, in council chambers at five-thirty. The Airport Thirty will meet this Wednesday, December eighth, at five-fifteen at the airport.
Thank you. Twenty twenty-two City of LaPorte Common Council Meeting Schedule, if you can believe it, we're gonna be approving twenty twenty-two schedule for meetings. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. It's around the corner. All in favor, state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes six-zero. LaPorte City Council, twenty twenty-two Appointment to Business Improvement District Board.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the following board members.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the following board members. John Spiegel, our current treasurer, Thaddeus Cutler, our current president, Jessica Granger, and Liz Ward.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
I'd like to make another motion, and this is a motion for the vacated seat as Jordan Anderson has stepped down from the Business Improvement District Board. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Don Melikiori, the new owner of Laporte Sporting Goods Building, who will be opening a wine bar and bistro in 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? And may I say that?
Do you have questions? Well, would you like to be reappointed too? You didn't say your name, did you?
Well, I didn't know if I could appoint myself. I mean, I think the UEA-
Okay, then we'll wait, let's-
Yes, well-
I don't wanna get confused here, okay.
How far is the wine bar from your-
Almost three doors. Exactly five steps. No, I, yeah, it's gonna be wonderful.
We're excited to see that open in the September-ish of 2022. It's gonna be fantastic.
She also has experience serving on boards within cities where she has other restaurants outside of Chicago, so I'm quite excited to have her serve on our board.
So I do have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Okay, I would like to, for the Business Improvement District Board, nominate Laura to have her continue to serve. Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Laporte City Council, 2022 Appointment to Fire Merit Commission.
Has anyone spoken to Josh to see if he would like to continue?
No, no, but I can do that. No.
I, I thought that Tim Frankie had, I thought, but he's not here tonight, so we could put that on the next-
Yeah, can we, can we table that? I'd like to make a motion to table the fire.
We'll table that. We will now move to Laporte City Council, 2022 Appointment to the Laporte Alcohol Beverage Review Commission.
And again, I'll make the motion for Laura Cutler, if she would like to continue.
Sure, I will.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Is that our only appointment to that?
Yes, I believe so.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Laporte City Council, 2022 Appointment to Police Merit Commission.
Like Terry Shear.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? For Terry Shear. Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Laporte City Council, 2022 Appointment to the Redevelopment Commission.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Brian Chalick and JT McDermott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Laporte City Council, 2022 Appointment to Urban Enterprise Zone Association Board.
Your Honor, I'd recommend and like to make a motion for the reappointment of Frank Cardello as Manufacturing Business Representative, Ryan Laux as a resident representative from the zone, and also appoint Jim Barnhart as a resident representative of the zone. We do need to have both a Democrat and a Republican, and Ryan Laux represents Democrat, and Jim Barnhart as Republican, and both live within the zone.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Then I-
Laporte City Council, or do we have more UEA?
Laura needs to be reappointed, don't you?
I didn't know if I did. Did I?
Yes, do I have a motion?
So I would, I would like to make that motion to reappoint Laura.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I guess I could've been kicked off everything tonight. Sorry.
Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Laporte City Council, 2022 Appointment to Board of Zoning and Appeals.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Brian Cager to the Board of Zoning and Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Councilwoman West.
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman West.
Whereas there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2021 budget in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of Laporte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year of 2021, from the general budget, from clerk treasurer salaries to the fire department salaries, $6,000. Common Council, from 123 unemployment to 111 salaries, $381.35. Board of Works, from 341, workers' compensation, to 351, utility services, $27,000. Fire Department, from 124 pension to 111, $9,900. From 241, other supplies, to 131, employee benefits clothing, $2,250. From 321, communication transportation, to 131, employee benefits clothing, $1,300. From 351, utility services, to 131, employee benefits clothing, $3,650. From 361, repairs and maintenance, to 131, employee benefits clothing, $6,800. From 211, office supplies, to 291, other services, $50. MVH, from the MVH salaries to the MVH other maintenance and repair, would be $30,000. From the bid, from repairs and maintenance to other services, would total $4,463.67. Transit, from employee benefits to communication and miscellaneous, $3,000. From the 2020 GO refunding bonds, from the interest to principal, would be $50,000. The seed it to planner, from 111 to 315, $24,000. The seed it from 375 Beechwood Lakes to 315, school land swap, would be $6,240.94. And from 375 Beechwood Lakes to 312, IT services, would be $25,000. End of resolution.
So because this is a resolution, it only has to be read and passed one time. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? For Treasurer Parthoon.
Sure, so this, again, this is end of year transfers. Budgets are just estimates, so the departments are moving monies within their budgets. As you can tell, I, I haven't, we haven't gotten to the police department, but the fire department, you can see that the effects of COVID on salaries really took a hit on, on fire. You can see that. They're scrambling to get money into their salaries. So I just wanted to note that we are getting money into their salaries to cover overtime and, and the salaries that it's, it's taken to continue our public safety in Laporte. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Does some of that federal money cover some of that salary from COVID?
Not, not from this, because those are budgets.
Okay.
Not in here.
Further discussion? I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Councilwoman Ficus, easement agreement amendment between City of Laporte and Diani Realty.
Your Honor, I move to introduce an easement agreement amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
Easement and gross. This easement and gross agreement is made on the sixth day of December 2021 by and between the City of Laporte, Indiana, City, and Diani Realty LLC, Diani. The City and Diani will be individually referred to herein as a party and collectively referred to herein as the parties. Recitals. Whereas on November 16th, 2021, the parties entered into an agreement entitled Purchase Agreement, herein the Purchase Agreement. And whereas the Purchase Agreement sets forth certain terms and conditions governing the exchange of real estate between the parties, which terms and conditions require Diani to grant certain easements to the city. And whereas, among the easements required to be granted by the Purchase Agreement is an easement from Diani to the city for ingress, egress, parking, and dumpster placement and maintenance. And whereas, Diani is the owner of a parcel of real estate consisting of approximately 0.36 acres, identified as parcel number 46-06-35-108-003.000-043, located in Laporte County, Indiana, and identified on Exhibit A, the Diani Real Estate. And whereas, the city desires to use a portion of the Diani Real Estate for ingress, egress, parking, and dumpster placement and maintenance. And whereas, Diani is willing to grant an easement and gross for the city for ingress, egress, parking, and dumpster placement and maintenance. And whereas, the parties by and through their authorized representatives have reached an agreement on the boundaries, terms, and conditions of the easement, which boundaries, terms, and conditions the parties now desire to reduce to writing and sign, intending to be forever bound thereby. End of amendment.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Bert Cook, LEAP.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I won't get into the agreement. I think we're all familiar with it. You passed it at your last meeting. After you did pass this, we, we traded language with the developer and their attorneys. There were a couple of things that they identified in this original agreement that they'd like to see changed. We agreed with those changes. Both Nick Otis and Matt Hagenow had a chance to, to review. Very briefly, there's two major changes. One is the agreement is going to be in place as long as the city owns the property, as opposed to into perpetuity. And the second, we used some language, waste in particular, as, as a term we used. We changed that to dumpster. Technically, what the Park Department has there is a dumpster, and that's what they intend to keep there. Just wasn't a great level of comfort with the word waste, because that can signify other things. I don't wanna speak for Attorney Otis, but I think we're very, very comfortable with this, and we put this in front of you in the hopes that you will be as well, and we can move forward with this project.
No, no issues. I, I think it, it suits what we wanna do, and totally understand that if we sell the property at some point, that they may not want whoever that is to have an easement over, over this parcel. So frankly, the city's been using this for years already, so this codifies what was already going on.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Any news on the fast casual restaurant that's coming that you'd like to share?
We will be very excited to announce that when the time is appropriate.
Councilwoman Cutler. Council review of Laporte Riverfront District alcohol permit for Mo and me.
Okay, I will actually ask Bert Cook to stay up here. Thank you, Bert. I did wanna reiterate that at this meeting, the group, Kimberly Riley, when she presented the application and spoke with all of us, and we reviewed it, it was a very thorough application, and we felt that it would do exactly what we want the Riverfront District alcohol permit to do, and that's engage more business to come downtown and have stronger walking traffic. It seems to foot the bill, but I'll let Bert Cook add to that, if you would, please.
Absolutely. So just a reminder to the council, because we haven't done many of these in the past, we have this Riverfront District program. You all agreed to expand that bound, or the boundaries of that district earlier this year. We have, since the, we enacted the program, we have received and, and awarded one permit, which was to El Cantorito. They've been in operation for a while now. It's, it's been going very well. We had one other application that the committee did not choose to forward on to the council for their approval, but again, goes through a, a committee that is made up of a council representative, which is Laura Cutler, our Chief of Police, Brett Binvercy, who is the city appointment.
Chief, Bretton.
Chief Bretton. And that group processes, so the, the applicant stands in front of that group and, and has an opportunity to have a good dialogue and, and ask questions. We went through that process. I appreciate that Kim is here with us tonight. I agree with, with Councilwoman Cutler. They did a terrific job in filling out the application. I do believe you all have that in your packet as well. I'll highlight just a few things. We are talking about the, what I think is the really cool building that is owned by Troy Clark, that was formerly New Age Bakery. They have the nice roll-up door in the front. Would be very excited to see that put back into use. I think the concept that you have in front of you is, is really cool with, of course, the alcohol component of it, but the real focus is the food aspect and the wood-fired pizza. Mo and, and his team, I think, are pretty well-known in Laporte, are very well-known in the region. They do terrific work. I'm sure many of you have eaten at their establishments, either in Michigan City, the Food Truck, which is, which makes its rounds, or his newest venture here in Laporte, Zorro's, which has opened up- 37 days ago. So he's obviously invested heavily into our community. We greatly appreciate that. And, and, and this program is designed specifically for this reason, to give us additional opportunities in our downtown. So I, I believe that there was unanimous support by the committee.
I should add that Brian Chalick is on that as well from RDC. That's what we forgot.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Brian.
So, and, and everything's there. The application was filled out in full. I'd be happy to answer any particular questions that you might have. I'm sure Kim would as well, if there's things that I can't answer, but please.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I wanna know who helped Mo with the very thorough application, Mo.
And we appreciate your investment in Zorro's. If you haven't had the opportunity to sit down there and try, I'd encourage you to do so. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Mo and me, we assume that'll be open Friday this week?
Yes, please.
Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other business? Are there any other comments from the public that due to social media may want to address here?
There was quite a bit of chatter on, on the streaming tonight. Jeff Miller asks, are there hidden things being done on the COVID front by all, including them in the healthcare community? Anything prevent, preventative being put in place, such as masks in public places to staunch this latest huge COVID spike in Laporte? He commented that the hospital is full, so, Mayor, if you want to address that.
Sure, and I'll be glad to. You know, we have promoted the vaccine everywhere, every day. We know the vaccine keeps people out of the hospital, keeps them from dying. We've seen that medically across the way. And we encourage anybody that's whether behind a computer, out in the public, we are, again, quietly going door-to-door, partnering with the county. Julie West has done this. The council has done this. Going door-to-door to lower-income areas and bringing nurses and vaccinations with us to encourage people that have questions, to have those questions answered. Be able to possibly even, and we've had people get vaccinated onsite at their apartments, because they can't leave because of children. So we are trying to do our part without mandating it, providing as many options for people as possible. And this Thursday, we will be at, and I can't think of the complex, and encourage anybody that wants to come help and be a part of the solution to come right there along 39, and now I can't, where we went for lunch and spoke to the members at lunch.
IBW?
Do you remember? We went and spoke to them. Sorry, Jackie, during lunch. Not Briarwood. I know, but where is that? You and I, they had vegetarian lasagna.
Portofino's.
You've lost as well. But we will be there Thursday, going door-to-door, and we do need some public members. Or we need more volunteers, because it's a big place. But the county nursing staff will be there to answer questions and have vaccines available for those individual. Boy, it's right there, and I, I apologize. I should've written that down.
You wanna comment too on, on the testing that's available as well?
As well. We partnered in Jim Pressel with the state right now through the end of the year. Thank you to Bert Cook and LEAP for exiting the depot building. And we now have COVID testing Tuesday through Saturday, eight to- have COVID testing Tuesday through Saturday, eight to, I believe it's six, eight to seven, walk-ins available. So I think we're doing our part to try to help those individuals stay safe. It's really above and beyond what government does, but we care. All of these members here care. No matter what we do, 50% of the individuals will say we're wrong, no matter what way we go. So we're just trying to do what's right. And we certainly appreciate any help from individuals that want to go knock doors with us this Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock. So...
Mr. Miller further commented. I, I think he's getting at why you're not mandating masks.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that. And again, vaccines, we're looking for the long-term solution, and our goal is to see as many people in our community be vaccinated, or at least have questions answered, and make sure we can educate those individuals that may have those questions. And it pays off every day. So we're going to continue to work and roll up our sleeves to help our community.
And Dusty Schof had a comment about he'd like to be nominated for boards. I think he kind of said that in a joking manner, but there's certain restrictions, of course, on being on these boards that we nominated, like the, the bid district, you have to live or work in, in the district, correct? The Fire Merit Commission, live in the city, and also be part of a certain political party, correct? Either Republican or Democrat. And that applies to, to a couple of these appointments. But the city's always trying to fill boards and commissions. So if Mr. Schof, if, if he's eligible, we certainly would, would consider him.
And call 362-0151 tomorrow. Annette Lefler will send an application. We're encouraging new people, positive people that want to make LaPorte a better place to be involved. You have to attend, and we'd look forward to those individuals to participate and be a part of the solution. So look forward to seeing his application. If you can get that in by Wednesday, that would be great, and please call Annette tomorrow. So, by the way, also remind everybody, Toys for Tots, the deadline is next week. Please bring toys in to the mayor's office over the next week. If you don't have those and just want to write a check financially, please do. Annette Lefler is leading that charge, and certainly want to make it a good Christmas for all. So with that, any further questions? Hearing none. All those in, or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I haven't been used since you haven't been here. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We are adjourned six to zero. Thank you.